This many of the Eureka Springs City Council come to order. First order on business is roll calls. Mr. Clerk, would you establish your call, please?
Ken Poundell.
Here.
Janet Alexander.
Here.
Lainey Balance.
I'm here.
James DeVito.
Here.
Butch Berry. Dean Kirkpatrick.
Here.
All right. Next we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody for the stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Next on the list is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Made in seconded. All right. Who wants to start off? Mr. Poundell.
On unfinished business number two, I know that's not my issue, but based on the letter we got from the Planning Commission Chairman, can we postpone that until the next meeting on the sixteenth?
Number two under new.
Unfinished.
Unfinished? Yes, sir, we can.
Do you have an extra agenda?
Okay. Any further? Yes, sir.
Adding number nine back on, update on the restroom maintenance. We left off on number ten, the Basin Park project discussion.
What was the first thing?
Update on restroom maintenance.
Okay. I took that one off because we've got somebody hired and he's cleaning them, and I took it off. I thought I... Didn't I say that we were going to hire somebody sometime back?
It was postponed from the last meeting.
Okay.
That's the only reason.
Are we going to add it or put it off? But we've... Somebody's hired, so it's just something... If you don't want to talk about it, that's fine, but he's cleaning the bathrooms.
I'll take that off and leave it. Basin is number nine.
Okay.
And what was the second thing?
Basin Park project discussion.
Any further?
I think it'd be appropriate if the comments under the mayor's comments for the opinion that we move for would be discussed at that time, if we could.
That's fine with me. It was just late getting to me, so that's why I put it under mine. Guys, I don't know about you all, but I am hot.
It's just your opinion.
Okay. I am inclement and raining on myself, let's put it that way.
Glistening profusely.
Yes. That's fat boy sweat a lot.
No, I'm actually okay.
Okay. So we strike that for mayor's comment, move it up to your number nine. Is that... Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further? Okay. Most have been made seconded and approved. Any further discussion?
Would you please go over what has been added and subtracted again?
Yes. My understanding is number two under unfinished has been postponed till the next meeting. The ordinance on backflow.
Yes.
Vows. Number nine is added as park project discussion with Mr. Weaver's opinion added to that. And under mayor's comments, Mr. Weaver's opinion was moved from there to number nine. Any others that I missed? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any post? All right. Next, approval of the minutes for May the nineteenth, two thousand and eleven.
Move to approve.
Second.
Made in seconded. Any discussion? Additions? deletions? Yes, ma'am.
On the last page.
Okay. I gotta find mine.
She noted, it should probably should be "it" is within.
Oh, thank you.
I must have left it downstairs. Okay.
Could you speak up, please, a second?
On the last page, just the last... Next to the last sentence on the first paragraph, she noted "in" is within. It should be she noted "it" is within, just...
Primordial.
And on... Under council... Senate council comments, Mr. Wells is Wells, then apostrophe, isn't that name it? Is Wells?
Oh, it is. Okay.
And that's it.
Thank you.
Apparently some... We were trying... Everybody else is trying to figure out what you were talking about.
Two typos.
Okay. Let me back up just a moment. Under approval of the agenda, the addition of the emergency ordinance I just handed you, I like to add that under new business because that's something we will need to discuss tonight as everybody was just at the site and saw what's going on. So we have this as number seven. Would that be...
I move to amend the agenda to include the emergency ordinance regarding waiving competitive bidding for ground and street stabilization work regarding support repair of Spring Street and Grand Avenue.
Is there a second?
Repeat that again.
No, we had it under... It wasn't on here because we just got it today. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay.
Did anybody second it? I did.
Yeah. All right. No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Any further on the minutes? If not, we move on to commission committee reports. Planning position number six, Ms. Chamberlain had been nominated, I believe, at the meeting before last. I wasn't here at the last one, so... Yes, sir.
Make a motion to accept Ms. Chamberlain's nomination.
Here's her second. Made in seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post? Carry. CAPC, we have two positions open now. Ms. Alexander resigned. She stated that she would devote her full time to city council business. Mr. Poundell.
Make a motion that we appoint Mr. DeVito to the other council position.
Okay. Motion's been made to ask Mr. DeVito to take that position. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post?
No.
Okay. Three to two. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Mr. DeVito gladly volunteered for this, and we thank him very much. There will also be an issue on the CAPC of a member-at-large, which I'm still working on. We have a few applications, so we'll work on that one. Parks position Mike Rowley nomination from, I believe, two meetings ago.
I'd move to open this for discussion.
Okay. Go ahead.
Second.
All right. Go ahead.
Okay. I believe that we do have another applicant and that the parks has been called, the commission has been called and asked their opinion, and they're of a mind that they, as individuals, wouldn't mind having this individual that has applied to join them on the commission. And the gentleman who applied for the... And we accepted his nomination, had applied for any position that we had open, which gives us a wonderful freedom to put him in a position where we might need him in a better capacity. So I see an opportunity to be able to move him into maybe somewhere that we could really use someone who's willing to serve in any way he can to help the community and use the other application you have on file that has been specified for parks.
Ms. Lindblad wasn't nominated for the parks. Mr. Rowley was.
Okay. I just... That's what we had heard and speaking with the commission.
Okay. Mr. Rowley, thank you. Mr. Rowley is the nomination to be considered.
Move to accept the nomination of Mike Rowley for position five on parks.
Is there a second? Okay. No second on Mr. Rowley? Next position is HDC, position number four. We don't have any applicants for it at the time. Cemetery commission, I just learned about forty minutes ago that Ms. Schwartz had resigned, and I didn't know until I read an email. I'm sorry? I'm... That's right. She's on the hospital. Okay. There's none on cemetery. It's full. My bad.
Who resigned?
In Schwartz apparently resigned from the hospital commission. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take public comments. Do we have the board? You're a good boy. I don't have to keep you. Thank you. All right. We have one signature on the public comment sign-up sheet, and that's Jay Wilks. Mr. Wilks?
Good evening. My name is Jay Wilks. I am... My name is Jay Wilks. I'm the current owner of Eureka Springs Limousine Company. In March of two thousand and nine, I purchased the existing business of Eureka Springs Limousine from former city councilman Rob Wagner. On the date I received my business license, I was handed a copy of ordinance two zero five one from the then city clerk. For the last two years, I have been operating my business under this ordinance. When I've had any questions or doubts, I've gone to the city website, clicked on the link, pulled up this ordinance, which as of this afternoon is still active on the city website. On May thirty-first, I found that the city... That the new city clerk issued a new business license to another limousine company. I was kind of surprised because having studied the ordinance as much as I have, I thought that was against the ordinance. Met with Ms. Armstrong this morning, and she handed me this showing that this... The ordinance was rescinded or never passed in two thousand and eight. So as of today, Eureka Springs has no ordinance, no laws governing any type of limousine service. Anybody can walk into town now and file for a fifty-dollar license fee and operate a limousine without any laws in regards to how the city operates, the safety, or the welfare of the city. I know for myself and Mr. White, who has a limousine and taxi service here, we have both worked very hard to provide a very top-quality service to Eureka Springs. As of this afternoon, as of May thirty-first, my business went to basically being worth what the paper it's printed on. So that's what I have to say, but the city council, you need to act and act fast, or by in a couple of weeks, you're going to have fifty businesses with limos running around town and no regulation on them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We got that one out of the way. So now, I seen Mr. Fugate standing here, and I apologize wholeheartedly for not getting you in under cemetery, so come on in.
I'm here tonight because...
Jim, okay. Nobody signed up for these things, guys? We're gonna get their names?
No. The commission...
Oh, plenty? Okay. I didn't know which one... Which shirt you were wearing today? Or hat?
It's a brown one.
Okay. Go ahead.
Ken Fugate, Chair of the Cemetery Commission. We have Mary Ann Purnell, also Commissioner, and Tom Reynolds, our maintenance man. And the reason we're here tonight is because we're on the agenda under new business to offer ourself in case any questions are needed by the council, so we'll be available during that time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay? So...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim?
Hi, I'm Jim Morris. Live here in Eureka Springs, serve on the Planning Commission, and Beverly is out of town. She's the chairman, and she asked me to come and give the report tonight, and I think that she sent the mayor four items that we're currently working on. I'll just mention what they're about, the sign ordinance prohibiting digital electronic signs. We did have a public hearing about that this past week. Also, we are trying to get a current zoning map, and we're asking to... For approval of fifteen hundred dollars to get that new map approved. We haven't had a map since nineteen ninety-nine, and it's really necessary for us to go ahead and do the rest of the Planning Commission's business, but to be the new zoning ordinance. McClellan Consulting Engineers Incorporated has offered to do this for fifteen hundred dollars, so I think a letter came to the mayor from Ms. Blankenship asking that that be done as soon as possible so we can get this map updated and we can bring it up to par so we can go on to the rest of the planning for the... For the city. One of the other things is we did have a public hearing on the request for the vacation of part of Palo Pinto Road. We didn't have anybody opposed of that. Ms. Grinnell was here and presented her case that, and it was approved by the commission to be sent on to you guys, so that was one of the things we did. We did have a public hearing on that also. And we also had the public hearing concerning the family, multifamily dwelling proposal. We had several comments on that. There is some in the report. I won't go through the stuff right now, but it's in the mayor's report. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. One other thing of interest, we did have Mr. Jim Von Tunglen from the municipal league come. We did a workshop all afternoon with him, and we've got some real good information. We're excited about getting going, actually laying out plans, what we want to do in the future, starting a long-range plan, looking back at the Donahue study that was done, using that as a basis. But moving forward, instead of getting bogged down and writing ordinances about things, we'd like to get into doing some planning, setting up priorities, getting back to you guys of what we're doing so we can look somewhere in the future and get something that moves on and probably set up a three, five, and ten-year plan to get this doing... Going. I know that when Mr. Poundell was on the commission, we tried to set up long-range plans, and we're now getting around to doing that, but this zoning map that we need, new city zoning map, is one of the very necessary things. We need to do that. Other than that, we are working on the pop-up ordinance, too. There's... We have one proposed. There's some things that I think still need to be changed in there, but it's going to be a lot simpler than originally came out, and it's probably a good idea in some areas, so we will be getting that back to you probably after our meeting this week for you guys to look at, and you can do the ordinance on, but it's our suggestion, so is there any questions about what's going on in the Planning Commission?
Since it's nowhere else on the agenda, on the fifteen hundred dollar quote from McClellan, is the majority of that doing the rework or the copying, or...
It's actually rework. We've had eleven rezoning ordinances since the last time it was done. Those do not appear on our map, and for us to do any planning, they've got to appear on our map for us to even look at any other areas outside of the actual city limits as far as influence goes, and we probably need to look at that. So, well, there's no question, we do need to look at it. So we do have eleven zoning changes that have been made since the last map was done in nineteen ninety-nine, so it's pretty important that we get a new map so that we have this. This is the basis. This is what it is. You can't just go in and mark a map and say, "This is official." You can do that to show where it is, but you need a printed map to make it the official map, so that's the... That's the reason we're asking for that now, so that's our basis, and we go on from that point. Does that answer your question, or...
Well, one of the things I was concerned with when I was working that prior, the county nine-one-one office was working with me on that, and they can print them, so if we can reduce costs by not having more, unnecessary, I'd recommend you check.
I think we have it. I'll check that again, but the reason we went with McClellan, they've done the last one, and we think that we might get one that would be generated on a computer we could work with off of that. They might give us something that we could work with from their study. I think that's what we're looking at, that would be a little more advantage so we can make changes ourselves in the future, so that's one reason we're looking at McClellan because this is what they do. They do zoning maps. And the county has done that. There's no reason we can't be included by expanding their study just a little bit, but we're looking at both things, but the low cost is pretty low for fifteen hundred dollars for them to update our zoning map. As you know, Mr. Poundell, the one we had there is quite a ways from accurate from what we used to work on before. There's a lot of changes aren't included. Some of it was actually not really correct to start with because it wasn't clear where some of the boundaries were, so... Yes.
Are we going to try? I don't know the right verbiage for... But as far as with the way that one was set up, there were issues at times where you could look at a property, but looking at the map, even if it were up to date, you couldn't tell really which zoning it was in. Can we make sure that we've got particularly on the lines where those streets fall?
Yes, and one thing we found, there are some streets that aren't even on this map, so we got... Trying to find certain places and see how they're zoned, the streets aren't even on this map, so that runs into a problem, too, is the big reason we want to get updated. So we got something current to work with that does include our new zone change. As you remember, we had a mobile home park in town, and we didn't have zoning for a mobile home park, so that was one of the changes that we did make. We went back and said, "This was an existing park." We made that change, so there's several other small changes. The last one was going from, excuse me, from the C-two-C to a C-two-H that we just... One of them we recently did, so that needs to be included, too, but as I said, there's been eleven rezonings since the last zoning map was brought up to date, so that's a pretty important issue for us.
Any further? Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we open a window or something?
It's really...
Can we open a window or something?
We'll just all talk. We'll talk loud for you.
We'll have to contend with the street traffic if we open the window.
We can talk ladder.
It's gonna let hundred-degree weather in. Okay. Any further on commissions? Any questions? Okay. Next thing we're going to is unfinished business. First on... First item is discussion of the fowl ordinance, Planning Commission. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Made in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. I noticed we have a new ordinance comparing the existing ordinance. Is this going to be a final draft on this one?
If I may.
Yes, sir.
What you're looking at, the little short ordinance, is cleanup of certain things that the Planning Commission through Ms. Blankenship had conveyed needed to be changed, and then there's a longer fowl ordinance that the Planning Commission has apparently acted on according to what was sent to me that would also... And it uses a different numbering system.
Okay.
Instead of... So this would eliminate fowls out of the general animal category, the little short ordinance, and then the longer one that you have would be the new regulation of fowl if you adopt it. So both ordinances would be... They would need to be passed hand in hand so that you don't eliminate other animals, but since you're probably just getting... I think all of you are just getting the short one. You may want to look at it for a while and compare it, and the other ordinance is very similar to the ordinance that you've already had on the table before, only it uses a different numbering system, and it does have some slight changes, so you may want to get that and compare to the two. But my understanding is that planning has sent this back to you at this point. That's my understanding. That's the most recent one, yeah.
I would move to table this till the next meeting so that we can get the updated version of the long form. I've got two forms in front of me and a short form, so I hesitate on making any vote tonight.
Okay. Before we make... Before we act on your motion, let it be known also that next meeting, there's three... Three of the council members are going to be gone, at least two council members, and I believe Anna is going to be in the municipal league. Is that correct? So if we've got enough, we can go ahead. Now, this is your call, if you want to have the meeting next... This next time or not. We postpone until the first meeting in July. You want to amend your...
Well, I'd move to... Move it to our first meeting in July.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Made in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Number two has been postponed, so number three is the deer hunt update. As of today, we have twenty-one people who have offered up property, access to their property for the municipal deer hunt. We're going to come up with a little better map. We'll go with a little bigger, but we'll get calls daily. I believe Ms. Rona had also told some of the guys at Public Works that they could hunt the slide out there because there's deer all over that thing now, but she hasn't made it official to the office, so we won't presume that she's going to allow it for the general public. Setting the date and doing it, guys, is pretty much it. Any questions? If not, we'll move on.
Well, let's call in Fish and Game and have them coincide it with their normal.
That's up to y'all. Yeah, they said this... You follow their rules, and that's what they're going to go by.
Well, then, I'd like to make a motion that we contact Arkansas Gaming Fish to set up a... To calendar a plan for us to move forward with setting up a hunt.
Okay. There again, our last contact with them, they stated, "We have to follow their existing rules," which happens during their regular season.
Right.
It's up to the council to set the meeting... The hunt date inside the city limits. Then that'll be publicized, and then whoever will contact the hunters will contact the property owners that we have a list of and get permission to hunt for that day.
Right. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We would still need to contact them before we proceed any further, though, wouldn't we?
No, ma'am.
No?
No. Their rules are set.
I'm sorry. I didn't...
Mr. Poundell, you had your hand up first.
That was basically what I was going to say as far as it appears that the only thing that has to happen is, if I understand it correctly, is setting the date within the deer hunting season for both.
That is correct.
Making sure that then those who sign up to hunt meet the qualifications of game and fish, but they are no longer going to interface with us.
I would request that these people come to City Hall and register telling us where they're going to hunt and make sure that the property owners and them have talked to each other and that we have a little... A little bit of knowledge, at least, where they're going to be and what times they're going to hunt. Some of them probably hunt half the day, all day. It depends. There again, that's set by the game and fish guidelines in the existing rules now. Yes, ma'am?
Are we going to accept game and fish license?
They have to have a hunting license.
Okay.
They have...
Where's from the game?
They have to comply with everything game and fish requires anybody that hunts in any other place in the state of Arkansas during that season.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was from Arkansas Gaming Fish.
Yes. That's correct. Ms. Balance, you had your hand up.
When is bow season?
I believe it starts the first of October and goes through January. We'll get a finite answer on that. Again, it also coincides with muzzleloading season, so we want to make sure it's bow hunting. We don't want anybody making that mistake. "Well, I thought you said we could hunt in here with..." No, that's not the... That's not the facts. Yes, ma'am.
Are we going to allow the hunting during the whole season? Are we going to set up a day?
It says a one-day hunt.
Fifteen minutes?
Well, I'd say hunt would go from starting time on a specific day until dusk. They can't hunt after dark.
A time.
Yeah, and y'all set that. Since it's inside the city limits, you set the time. If you want to set... Well, from there again, daylight to dark. You can't hunt after dark.
Well, we need to define that and not leave it.
Well, there again, that, you can go with the rules the game and fish has set forth now. They've got dates and times, or you can sit her on. But I would go with them. That way it takes the burden off of you. Mr. Poundell?
I would make a motion that we find a date within the bow hunting season and set it where they can get their training and go forward.
Motion's been made. Set a date within bow hunting season, and they also be trained?
I'll set that.
Made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Ms. Balance, I didn't, did you respond one way or the other?
I did not.
I didn't hear anything. Okay.
I did not. I'll abstain.
Abstain?
Yes.
Okay. Doc, I didn't hear you. What was yours?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, so it's three, one to one. So, the motion carried. You'll set your date, and they'll, they'll comply with game and fish rules.
It only can, it only carries if you voted.
Because it has to be four?
Yeah.
Oh, two-thirds?
The majority of the vote.
Okay. Yes. They voted to have it. We'll give it to them. And if you want me to pick the date, I'll pick the date.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll make that part of the agreement.
Christmas Day.
A lot of people hunt on Christmas Day, actually, and Thanksgiving Day. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions on that matter? All right, we'll move on. Discussion of municipal code 2.36.04, operation manual for the finance department. Ms. Balance and Mr. Kirkpatrick, motion to discuss?
Move to discuss.
Second.
Made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Open it up. Y'all should have a copy of the operation manual, the tentative operation manual. That Mr. Yvonne can, to you on the finite details on it right now. Questions? You haven't had time to read it yet, so...
I have not.
There again, this is tentative upon one more condition that I'll let her explain, for what, what we'll finally finish it out, and that'll be a final, finalized document.
I'm still waiting on the information from the other side of audit, but I went ahead and included it as part of the plan or the manual. So, whatever, y'all.
Would give her some extra time. We'd entertain a motion to, to postpone until the Ju, first July meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll move it to the July meeting. Number five on unfinished business is discussion of new accounting software program for finance department. Ms. Balance and...